Make a little quick announcement, Commissioner Brenneman and I are both without hearing aids today. So we're going to need anybody who's speaking to please come up to the microphone. We apologize for it, but he had, they both malfunctioned. And, uh, but since my hearing is slightly better, I'm going to run the meeting in Commissioner Luisos's absence.
That was my personal microphone.
So we can stand and Alson Lee's in the pitch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sessor.
Thing I have is a consolidation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve a consolidation presented by our assessor this morning.
The same owners, okay, a second, all favor. Okay, we're gonna have to, um, have Tom sign our stamps, so.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, if you mind, we hold on to them.
All right, these are donations, so remember this is July, so they're a little more than normal there.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the honorations presented this morning by the subject.
Second, all favor.
One refund that was generated by that.
Okay, I make a motion to set the refund presented this morning by Eddie.
Second, all favor. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll probably text him at a break and see if we can have him stand. Do you have to have original signature?
I mean, that's, I think you guys.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
They've been stamped before.
Yeah, so, but I, I felt good thinking of that.
Somehow.
So that's his permission.
Somehow did.
Can you text Tom?
Both at the same, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, just let me know when you're done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eddie.
Okay, move to approve payroll for on this.
Second.
All favor. On vouchers and invoices, um, I had a couple of concerns. One was, um, we had a request from the library levy to, um, approve a fourth quarter installment. We've discussed at length that we're not going to be doing installments and shouldn't be doing installments. We're going to have to apply the same standards to the library board that we do to the fire service, so, um, I'd like to exclude that. I'd like to also, um, I had a couple of questions about Armstrong Creek that we may be able to resolve before the end of the meeting, so if we could postpone that.
Chief from Armstrong Creeks here. Shannon's right there.
Oh, there you are, hey, so, I saw something that, I don't know if they were banks or what they were, and it mentioned Rodney Perdue, I wasn't sure which. I mean, but Manuel Davis and Chris McGee, it looked like they were making withdrawals or pay, was that, were they making, but there were no dollar amounts associated with them, I couldn't.
It comes along. Credit card.
Yeah, that's what kind of looked like, it looked like some sort of statement.
They all have credit cards or maybe not.
Okay, I, I just didn't understand, and then there were reimbursements to Dave Sergeant. What was that for? Some payments. Maybe I misread it. I saw that, I saw Diane's and I saw what hers were for. Okay, well, I may have misread that, so I'll check. And we resolved the other ones before the meeting, so, um, other than the, if that's a Diane Sergeant, then I. There's no Dave Sergeant, so I just missed, I just misread it, okay, yeah, um. All right, so I'm going to move that we approve vouchers and invoices with the exception of the library, uh, board's request until we resolve.
Second.
That issue, all in favor.
I'll make a motion to approve prior meeting minutes for July tenth.
Second, all in favor. We have estate settlements.
I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
I didn't see those in my packet.
Yes. It's right in the very top, here you are.
Yeah, that's in my, my electronic packet, so. I'll add it to the stock. I'm sure. Yes, okay, did you already move, John? Second, all favor. Gia, do you want to get started?
The very first thing, yours, we banked rates, but people who, or they have a file levy, they have a waiver and a levy, um, share them.
Okay, they just needed some updated information from the signatories. Does this mean we have to, I mean, I don't, I didn't see where there was something we needed to vote on for this, though. I mean, it looks like they just needed updated information at the bank, so I don't think that, do you think there's any reason we need to vote on that? I mean, they need like license numbers and stuff.
Yeah, just, just standard bank papers.
All right, so no need to vote on that. Um, but I, I can put Tom's in the staff. Thank you better. So we have a letter thanking the Board of Education for generously providing us with parking while we work on the courthouse annex, and, uh, maybe we approve it?
Second.
All favor.
That actually is the old version, Allison, the, the new version's still sitting in my printer, I just remembered, so I'll get it to you.
All right, I'm sorry about the revision and the resolution for Dan County personally. And I mean, we approved our budget revision.
Second.
All favor. Next, there was an application for a board member of Armstrong P S D. And we're very grateful for that, because right now there was only one board, and both, uh, Professor Brenneman, was this somebody you had recruited?
Yes, actually, no, the P S D recruited that person.
That's for Justin Murray.
Yes, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve, uh, Justin Murray going into the board at Mount Parish, or, excuse me, Armstrong Creek, P S D.
Second, all favor. Thank you, I need their grants for. The day of court session.
So the first one is for the BIPs, and, um, it needed to be signed and sent back pretty quickly, it's the smaller grant they received. So you just need to do that one retroactively.
This was already signed, it was like a training. Then that's, yeah, that was the BIP grant. So I move that we, it's BIPs.
Yes.
Better intervention, adventure. So I move that we approve the community correction BIPs grant documents.
Second.
All favor. What was the new one?
It's just their regular, um, grants.
The one that she gets usually every year, I think it's a little huge, it's anywhere from eight to.
But it's also Tom's signature, so we'll have to wait on him.
All right, I move that we approve the community corrections grant documents.
Second.
All favor. Resolution eight is Leslie, well, let's skip that one, because that's going to take a minute, I think, let's get through some of these other ones.
Oh, we skipped into that, yeah.
Reason for the delay?
Because our final invoice came in after our last meeting in July, so I couldn't prepare the final drawdown request and paperwork to close out the grant, um, until a July commission meeting, and when I was down there for the training cycle, she said that since it happened after July first, I have to request another, an extension.
Okay.
It's just procedure.
So I move that we approve the extension request, but if you saw the letter already.
Yep, second.
All favor. Shippo, Shippo, coming in the contract. Has Anthony had the opportunity to review? Should be sharing.
Up on the.
The covenant and the contract, yes.
Yeah. I don't see the issue. There are a course of some. You can send a little requirements thrown in there, but.
Almost fifty in Spanish, what?
Well, just like we agree not to discriminate, but it is. We're not legal allowed to get in, we're supposed to fill the sign up, talking about what's paid for the. Rent funding, somebody's supposed to put, so that was the one they got the contract that I noticed, there's supposed to be a sign, but, uh, but it doesn't say due to funds.
Fairly certain Shippo supplies the sign, I'm fairly certain Shippo supplies the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Shippo requirement, that we give them credit.
Basically, yeah, there needs to be a sign saying that all this work is being paid for through.
Through your tax dollars that the business organization, okay.
It has to be a four by eight sign and so many other things.
I move we approve it despite that.
Well, there's no, I didn't see issues, I mean, it just seemed to be a somewhat.
Yeah, sounds like.
Uh, contracts.
So, I mean.
Second.
All favor.
And I need to go to the hearing next.
Yeah, we're going to go to the hearing and we'll get back to, uh, items ten and seven. And get some one time. So, the hearing is the one that we thought was the past meeting, but was not, so we've already kind of gotten our legal advice on it. Um, the petition to abandon land. Petition. Good to see you.
Good to see you all, how are you doing this morning?
Very well.
Uh, can you?
I don't know.
They should hear you over the.
Okay, that's all right, that's all right. Since Mr. Luisis is not here, I thought, Anthony, we had a copy of this petition. Um, I looked at it at the last meeting, I will have a copy in front of it.
I think it'd be helpful if I give you these, uh, the petition and exhibits, just for your information.
We have copies of that.
Yeah, oh, you already have copies, yeah, okay, all right, okay, good. All right, well, uh, we are here today, uh, on the petition of Pessy Properties, a limited liability company, uh, companies that consists of Louis M. Fish and Shirley Beth Fish, his wife, and Carl Rose and Shirley Beth Fish, brother and sister. Uh, they live on either side, the Pessy Properties is on one side of this small portion of a street that we seek to abandon, and, and Carl and Shirley are the owners on the other side of this small portion that we're seeking to abandon, this is in Boomer, West Virginia, an unincorporated, um, community, and that's why we're here before the commission, since the commission would have jurisdiction of, of this type of a case. Hopefully you have read the petition, but I think simply going through the petition and looking at the exhibits, particularly looking at the exhibits will give you a, uh, a good idea of what we're seeking to do here. Uh, I will represent to the commission that Pessy Properties is the owner of lots thirty, thirty-one, section one in Boomer, uh, known as thirty E Street, the deed that they acquired property, acquired this property is attached as exhibit A, the deed is there even review it. The other petitioners, Carl and Shirley Beth Fish, brother and sister, are the owners of lot twenty-two, section two, known as twenty-two E Street. Uh, and the deed, uh, is also, uh, exhibit B is attached showing how, uh, Mr. Rose and Mrs. Fish, uh, became the owners of that property. So Pessy and, and Carl Rose and Shirley Beth own property on either side of this small portion of, uh, the, uh, street that we are seeking to abandon. If you look at, uh, exhibit C, uh, which is attached to the petition, uh, the Pessy Properties property is outlined in green. And the, uh, Carl Rose and Beth Fish property, uh, is outlined in orange, and you will see that between the green and the orange, the street comes down to the edge. It's a cliff there at the end of the street. The street that goes down in the middle between the two properties at the end of the street, at the dead end street, and at the dead end of this street, there's a cliff that goes over the, this, you, you go into the Canal River. So, uh, as you can see, uh, they own the last two pieces of property on either side of this street, leading to the cliff that goes off, uh, through the river, you can also see the tan part of the street, that little tan part there, that's the portion that is seeking to be abandoned. So that, that's a picture of that part of it. Exhibit D, uh, highlights C Street, D Street, E Street, and F Street. All of these streets are dead end streets and dead end at the cliff, which goes over into the Canal River, it's depicted on, on exhibit D, you'll see, uh, those streets on the map there, uh, and, uh, I would state that, that the, you can see again in between, um, the green is on one side, the orange is on the other, and it's just that little teeny portion at the end of the dead end of E Street, which is seeking to be abandoned. By the way, the, that portion of this park we're seeking to be abandoned hasn't, the street hasn't extended, it's, 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 it's grass, I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's not a street, it hasn't been for fifty, fifty years. Moving on then to, uh, um, exhibit E, the petitioners seek to abandon this small unused segment of E Street at the end of the dead end street, which small segment, again, is situated between Pessy Properties and the Rose and Fish properties. Again, you can see that on, uh, exhibit E, and it's the brownish portion of the street that is seeking to be abandoned. Again, E Street is a dead end street, um, and the portion to be abandoned is located at the very end. The small portion of E Street consists only of a small grass covered portion of the street, which is blocked from travel by a curb and a drain and a steep embankment down to the riverbank, and that's on exhibit F. You see the picture of the grassy, I call it the grassy knoll here, it's, uh, you know, but anyway, uh, that is what is seeking to be abandoned, that, uh, grassy part there, and you can see the obstruction there, nobody uses the street, and, and my clients have maintained it, mowed it, kept it, you know, uh, nice, and so forth for many years. Uh, again, uh, it's a, at the end of this grassy part is a steep embankment, which has bushes and things on it, it's a hazard. For anybody that would go near it, there's no, nothing to, the primary purpose, one of the purposes, the primary purpose for the petitioners is they would like to put a, a fence at the end of it, so that they don't get, uh, to protect people from falling off and going off into the river, you never know who may or may not be, may go on there, but at any rate, this piece of property is not used, uh, other than to be mowed and kept nice, and most of the residents appreciate, all the residents appreciate them cutting the grass and keeping weeds cut, and so, uh, it's our position that, uh, that, uh, this portion should be abandoned so that they technically will have the ownership of that on one side, half one, half and half on one side, half on the other, uh, once it's abandoned. Uh, we don't have, have no, I don't believe, we have sent notice, uh, as indicated in the court file to, out of an abundance of caution, the, you know, the ordinance or the, or the statute, you could read it, or, nobody else has an interest in it, because nobody can use the street to drive down there, but nevertheless, we gave notice to every single owner on E Street, and, uh, we've had no, no objections even, I don't believe anybody, well, E Street is, is here to object, so. We don't believe that the rights or interests of any other party are, are adversely affected by the abandonment, and so we would seek an order from the commission, uh, closing that small portion of the, uh, street, and, uh, entering an order and putting it in the record so that it will be, and, uh, so if you have any questions about the matter, um, willing to have, quite clear, to ask, you know, answer any questions further that you may have.
Is there anybody who wants to comment on that, any member of the public? Okay.
We're objecting.
You're objecting?
Yeah.
Sir, can, can you come up to the microphone for a couple of reasons, Commissioner Brenneman, I can't hear very well, but also, so the people on the Zoom meeting can also hear.
Your Honor, let me, uh, uh, certainly we will have them.
Uh, Your Honor, I would just say that it's our position that they don't have standing to bring any, uh, objection, because they're not on E Street. They live on a street, uh, which street is.
They don't live on E Street either.
Okay. Time out, when you come up to talk, we need you to state your name.
Okay.
And where exactly your address is, please.
Let me just finish it, they live on A Street, not on E Street, and therefore, they don't have a significant interest, they don't have standing to bring an objection here, uh, for the reasons just stated, that they, they don't live on the street, so they don't have any, uh, uh, personal interest or personal stake in the conference.
Okay, and, and just as a reminder, this, this is the county court, so we're not going to have any fussing, you know, everybody's going to have their turn to talk, okay?
Sorry, go.
That's all right.
Tell us your name.
Okay, my name's Anthony Fish, I live on A Street, my son lives on E Street, and the, I have a lot of pictures of the properties that are supposed to be abandoned. They're not abandoned. These, these, these.
Everybody in Boomer keeps them mowed, you know, who is your son?
Steven, Steven Fish. And here's, you know, these properties, they're the properties that are supposed to be abandoned, and they're not abandoned.
They do own the properties on the two sides of E Street, but they live on A Street.
And we are here definitely to object.
Hi, this is in response to the petition of Pessy Properties, uh, Louis M. Fish and Shirley Beth Fish of Benalife, Carl W. Rose and Shirley Beth Fish, brothers and sister, to abandon an unused portion of a street. The applicants referenced above are seeking the abandonment of a portion of public right of way for private ownership of their exclusive use. As multiple general community residents with more than a century of continuous property ownership, commitment, involvement, community involvement, and investment, we believe there are several reasons for the commission of Fayette County, West Virginia, to reject the petition of the applicants. The property was given to the community by Union Carbide Corporation, not subject to sale or for any type of construction as per assigned notarized letter from Robert E. Wymer Senior, retired Union Carbide Corporation, attached hereto. Current map, text map, shows the property in question to be undescribed portion of parcel ID ten oh three oh two eight M nine 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 zero 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 two, which is depicted to be every public street and river access in the community of Boomer, west of the railroad tracks. The applicants failed to provide a legal description of a specific and precise portion of that property they hoped to acquire for public review and comment. Naming two parcels and saying the parcel of interest situated between these two parcels does not legally describe a portion of property sufficiently for the transfer of ownership rights. There is no way to say, for example, either. Property LLC, the entirety of the E Street public right of way based on the applicant's vague published description. There are roughly a hundred and fourteen residences on the six streets that make up silver bottom. Of those twelve parcels, two per street are riverfront and have private river access, and those parcels are among the largest in the community, at roughly a quarter acre each on average. That is roughly three acres of riverfront access permanently in the private control of twelve residences. Each of the six existing public river access points are on one tenth of the acre or less. That leaves approximately a sixteenth of an acre or two to be shared by the remaining a hundred and two homes in the community when they wish to access the Canal River for recreation, transportation, or any other legitimate reason. It is an unmitigated statement of fact that Canal Riverfront and River Access property are among the most valuable types of real property in the county or in any community variant. The applicants who admittedly already own a significant portion of the established River Access property in the community are asking to take even more river access away from the overwhelming majority of the community. Additionally, they ask this for their insider, private, and exclusive use and are not proposing any sort of offset compensation, mitigation, or anything else of value to the community in exchange for its loss. We ask that the commission of Fayette County, West Virginia, reject the applicant's petition for the above reason, and that the remaining public river access in our community would be protected even in the course of efforts in the future. We never considered the possibility that the precious little public access we in the community have been fortunate enough to have to the great Canal River. have been fortunate enough to have to the great Canal River for a sanctuary may someone have taken out from under our feet by private interest. We never considered it because it is honestly unthinkable. In closing, we'd like to reiterate the following. One, the property was given to the community for public use. Two, the applicants have failed to legally describe the land they are asking for. Three, there are approximately three point six acres of riverfront property in the community. Four, three acres of this is already in private hands. Many of those hands belonging to the applicants. Five, the remaining point six acres was all that's left for the remaining one hundred plus houses in the community. We find it unacceptable to give up what is among the rarest, most valuable property in our community to private interest for no compensation whatsoever.
Okay, so you say that there's a hundred and fourteen houses there that have access. How many other people are here to discuss this?
Your Honor, we've given notice in June to every
The Fayette Tribune.
No, not only in the Fayette Tribune, personal delivery of letters to every person that lives on E Street and none of them are here. Furthermore, again, well, I'll stop there about that part of it.
Okay.
This, this is not true. There's people on the E Street and then listen, if we have to go.
We went to talk to some and they hadn't received.
These people could not be here at nine fifteen in the morning. They were, they can't be here, but.
Our son was on vacation when they sent him and get his letter.
And there are people on E Street and we can get the people, if we have to go to a few of this, we get the people to prove they did not get letters on the E Street. Everyone on the E Street did not get a letter.
Were, were the other parcels you're talking about also acquired through abandonment?
No.
No.
They have not been abandoned.
If, if that, are you calling this abandoned? We got the pictures. If that's abandoned, then everything down there is abandoned. They don't lose them all.
No one's saying the property is abandoned. That's a legal term. That's a legal term to change the ownership from public.
Well, it was right here.
Right, but it's, it doesn't, it, it's not a description of property.
When you, when you take your grandson and sit on the property and feed the geese and enjoy the property, is that abandoned?
No, and that it, you're miss, you're not understanding what the legal term means. The legal term is different. It's, it's a change in ownership from public ownership, which is the county to private owners. That's what they're requesting to happen. It doesn't mean the property is unused.
The property, the property designation as a road is abandoned. It's not being used as a road. That's what it meant.
It's not being used for one.
As a road. That property.
It is attached to the road, the same number, three on the river. Yeah, the same number.
Sir, I'm not trying to get into an argument with you. I'm trying to explain the term of abandonment and basically.
Here it is.
The road is used.
Here it is, ten oh three oh two.
It's not a road from the end of the pavement to the river.
It's all the same. It's all attached. It's all attached. You gonna abandon it? Are we going to give it in the street? It's all, it's all.
It's not. They're asking for sure.
No, it's, it's all, it's all on the same number. Every street has got the same number all the way to the river.
Don't worry, we're gonna look at the legal stuff. Okay? And I'd like to hear from your neighbor back here who has something she wants to say.
Yeah, she'll have to come up to do it too.
I want to after, I want to hear what she has to say. Okay, we have one person on Zoom as well, John.
Okay, my name's Melissa White. I live on D Street. At the end, I have, we have forty-eight D Street. My brother-in-law has the other side. Uh, we were always told that the property was owned by, like, that was their fire access. So if it's not, if they can get theirs as abandoned property, we've lived there twenty me and my husband's been married twenty-six years, so twenty-seven years. And my father-in-law owned the house before my brother-in-law ended. Um, so if it's considered abandoned, we have took care of it. We mowed it. We, we've done everything to it. Um, river access, I would say, no, nobody's going down that. I mean, for real, nobody's going down that. And I think that if you're, if you want to do it, then that's gonna be, but you're, you're gonna have to fence it because then it'll be our property and it'll be our responsibility of somebody. But we wouldn't like to have ours too. We didn't know about it. I did not know about this until I think I talked to the Fayette Post Office last week. I, we were not notified of anything. Um, but we are on D Street. We're not on E Street. I get why they want it because the access onto your property is so easy. We've had a gentleman that thought he was at Myrtle Beach, drunk, fell over the hill, firemen come and had to get him. Um, that's the only time I can think because the river access, I mean, it's all grown up. It's trees. It's, you know, it's steep. Yes, it's very steep. But if it, we owned it, we, ours is very clear. Ours is pretty. I brought pictures. Um, we have a dock. We have our steps down to our dock. If we would have known this was going on, we, I could have brought you pictures. Um, we would take care of that too, but we would have to fence it because I mean, it's your responsibility. It's your property. Uh, we would like to have ours up there and now they're.
Well, this, that's not what this hearing is about. You would have to get
Right.
all your own kitchen and that sort of thing.
See, we tried about twenty-two years ago and we were told no because it is how the fire department would access the river, which they're going to go down my riverbank. I have steps. They're not going to go down that fast.
Yeah, we don't have Boomer here, do we?
No, Boomer's not here.
And also, I would like to have it myself to build a dock on it. My grandson now stay on that property. We feed the geese. We step in. We enjoy the property.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to add at this point? Uh, we have somebody on Zoom. Let's let whoever that is says. Okay, ask, ask him or her to identify themselves, please. We'll reconnect. Okay, so it's, it's the fish's son. It's Tony is your son?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so it's his comments. He just said that it's setting an important precedence because as we could see from the maps, all of the streets in Boomer have that sort of end. Um, and he says it's being used as a river access by the community. And that's okay. So, um, those were his comments. Do we have any further comments at this point? Either any parties?
Yeah, they said we have a sworn affidavit from the global employee of Union Carbide.
We'd like to, I'd like you to hand that to our counsel and, and we have a copy of that. Have you seen it?
No, I haven't seen anything.
It's on the back of that.
Is it on the back?
Yeah, yes.
It might be on the back of the paperwork I need.
Excuse me. Is this, is this the letter?
Yeah.
He said he has an affidavit also.
It's hard and he hasn't, he, I approached him and he said, you can't have the property. You can't buy it. You can't whatever. It was given to you in the four, fifties and sixties. And I'm eighty-one years old. So we have been on that property.
Yes.
Okay. Can I see that? And we'll, we'll make a copy. I'll make sure all the lawyer, you send a copy.
I gave you a copy.
Of the affidavit that he's showing you. No, I handed that to Mr. Tissue so he would have a copy.
You have an open document.
It's not really an affidavit. I mean, it's.
So what do you hold up? Okay, so it's a, it's a statement.
Sir, okay, but he's, I'm not trying to be argumentative. An affidavit has it's a notarized statement from the not trying to be argumentative with you. An affidavit has a legal competition.
Well, he's, he's scored to that.
Well, I gave him my copy as others, I copied everything. So I, I gave him my copy. So he agreed everything. No, I'll, I'll get prosecutor have my copy there, our, our copy. So, um, we'll, we'll look at his copy. I understand. So at this time, I'm going to move that we go into executive session to get some advice from counsel. And, um, we'll be back in a few minutes once we talk to our lawyer. Okay? All right, it's nine fifty back from executive, uh, session and no decisions were made, but we did receive legal advice from our counsel. Um, based on that legal advice, I'm going to move that we deny the petition to abandon the land.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe there are appeals rights, right?
Yeah.
So you can appeal our cert report. Um, we probably need to, um, like us to put some findings together.
Oh, we probably need to announce those.
Okay, um, well, basically, there are a couple of things. Um, it's our belief in, in Sean Man, but but that the, the property is the community's access to the river. And that, um, in approving an abandonment, we would be denying that access to the remainder of the community that does not have river access. We also don't want to create a precedent as, as we saw demonstrated um, here. And I, I don't blame the citizens. If we grant this one, um, why won't we grant, you know, preclude anybody from accessing anything and give all that property, abandon all that property along the river? So that only river, people with riverfront properties have access to the river. And, um, I grew up in the valley and I was one of those properties in Mount Carbon that was along the railroad tracks. And I know how precious those pieces of river access are, even if you can't climb down the hill, you know, you can still see it um, and enjoy it. And so, um, you know, that our rationale is that we don't want to restrict uh, river access to the members of the community who don't have it. And we also don't want to create a precedent that further does that. Um, John, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, additionally, the, um, the fire service may need to use that access to obtain water to fight a fire. That could be one of your homes. Let's hope not. Um, so we definitely don't want to block it on the count of that.
Anyway, but so that, that's the basis of our findings. And, and Anthony, if you think we need to write those up, if you could draft something.
I can draft some.
Okay, and, and then we can provide that to the party. So then you can have something. If you want to appeal it cert report, then you'll have something that you can take saying what we said, basically. So, um, we're going to need to move on now to the.
Passed out here for the first time, uh, should be attached to the, uh, and the evidence said that we made something to appeal on.
We will, and I handed you my copy of everything too, Phil, um, because I knew you would need it. If there's anything that you find that you're lacking, feel free to reach out to Anthony and, and we'll make sure you get it. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, so now, uh, we've got the, the painters union. Hi, welcome. And we're sorry for the delay. So things are getting a little heated this morning.
Uh, first, I'm the, uh, I'm David Glenn. I'm with I U P A K.
That's okay.
And I just bought some information. Uh, I went to the county commissioners conference in, uh, Weston or Stonewall, Jackson, June, and I talked to one of the commissioners there and he said, what you're telling me, you need, you're telling all the commissioners. So I'm just going around the commissioner meetings. Uh, they're basically giving you information. I'm not really asking anything. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for what you provided in advance. We received that.
And I, I'll just go through, break if you, if you don't mind. It's, it was, uh, it's like ten pieces of paper. Um, uh, the very first one on the left-hand side there is our, uh, Hema's Hard Hats Veterans Program. And I always bring this in up first. So, um, not only is the I U P A T, I believe all the unions have a direct hire. Uh, so if somebody gets honorably discharged out of the military, within one year after they've left the military, they could go to a union and get on. And, and I say this because some of the unions, it's harder to get on. We'll, we'll say pipe fitters and electricians. And so, um, but if, if you, if you're a veteran, you can get out and, um, they could do direct hires. It's a lot faster process through Department of Labor and, and so if I needed, we needed, uh, one guy and I had thirty applications, by law, I have interview all thirty people for that one guy. So if a veteran comes in, I could skip that process and we can direct hire him. So that's, that's what that flyer is about. Uh, the second one's just a little bit, little, uh, more about the I U P T. Uh, we've been around since eighteen eighty-seven. We have about a hundred thousand members around the nation. Uh, there are two thousand plus members here in West Virginia. Uh, we also cover my district council. We cover some of, uh, southeast Ohio, Kentucky, a little bit of Maryland and Virginia. Uh, on the back, it talks about how our, uh, our programs for the apprentices, uh, drywall finishers is a three-year program. Glazers is a three-year program. Bridge painters is actually a four-year program and commercial painters is a three-year program. And hydro blaster technician is a two-year program. Uh, and all apprentices are required four hundred and eighty hours a year. And now they do five tens and for three weeks and then they do uh, a couple of days on the computer at home. We've tried to take last classroom out because, you know, it's hard to get, it's hard to get people to do everything it's supposed to do. So we've taken a week out and made it down to three weeks. Uh, but that's just a little bit about that. The next flyer is our training center. It's the FBI Training Center, Finishing Trade Institute. Uh, we have a ninety-six thousand square foot facility up at Weston. That's where our apprentices go. Um, when our apprentices go there, we provide a hotel. We pay them thirty-two dollars a day so they can get dinner with, uh, we we provide their lunch for them and there's breakfast at the hotel. So they get thirty-two dollars a day. The contractor lays them off. So while they're at, at training and at our training center. Uh, we have two full-time employees and one part-time employee. All of our training is paid for by the I U P A T. Our members reinvest. We all pay so much per hour right back into our training. So we don't really get government assistance. It's all self-funded. I U P A T. Has, has been all the given. The next one, the elevated tank training, uh, we bought our training center with the fact that this, it had this hundred fifty foot tall water tower there. We are in the process of making it the first water tank painting training center in the country. Uh, it's still a work in process, but we have a lot of people interested in it. Uh, and it would be more time at our training center. I know this isn't Weston, but Weston's a little dying town and, and when we, it knows their twenty, twenty weeks of a year. So we help. We try to help keep it alive. We also do, uh, NACE certified NACE training in the country. So, and, and the state is at our training center. The NACE is a certified coding advocate. Uh, the next is empowered women. We hire as many as women as we can in our union. We actually have a higher ratio than many others. And we would, we would take more. And, and one of our biggest issues is the lack of, of people showing up to apply for the positions. So it's, you can't hire people that don't show up. And I know everybody's having a hard time finding anybody. But we do have a higher amount of women in the I U P A T than a lot of other of the trades. Um, we have a partnership with Job Corps. It's down in Charleston, um, on top of the hill. If you've ever been to it, uh, the I U P A T, the painters union, the carpers union, both have pre-apprenticeship program, Job Corps, if you know much about it. The last time you had a meeting, uh, I didn't get to speak because I had a meeting here, one, I had a meeting here with the Job Corps that I really learned a little bit because I didn't know much about it, but um, it takes like troubled kids and it helps some get high school plumbers, GEDs, driver's license, and it also makes them in pre-apprenticeship. So when they complete the program at Job So when they complete the program at Job Corps, they could be an apprentice in the painters union or the carpenter's union. The next one is just. Pictures of some of the projects we've done around the state. Would we, you know, we do work all over and it's just some of the different areas that we've worked on in the state. The next one is the reinvestment keeps turning over. In a city. Basically, it is when you hire local, the money stays local. If if you hire out of state contractors. Our state is notorious for bringing in out of state workers and and sending all the money out of state. It's. It's a shame, you know, if you hire and and I speak for union and non union. At least if you hire. Someone local, they get paid, they spend their money in the community, they buy their cars, they get their house loans, they buy their clothes, they go to the restaurants. When you hire out of state contractors, all the money that you've got through taxes, you just send it right out of state. So it's really bad investing. To hire out area contractors. The next flyer is just a map of my district council, that's where all I cover. Yesterday, I was at a meeting in Petersburg for the county commissioners. It was six and a half hours early, it was six, three thirty meeting and I got there at nine AM. So I got to drive around some and Pendleton, Granton, Hardy County yesterday. I drove five hundred forty miles and never left the state. But that's just a map of our as the area that I cover, but I mostly spend most of my time in West Virginia. A little bit in Ohio, a little bit in Kentucky. The next one is just a flyer with several of West Virginia contractors, it's just. Just contractors that do painting, commercial painting, drywall. Blazing, which is the installation of glass. And general contractors that are from West Virginia as well that hire West Virginia contractors. So there's a list you could use if you ever have projects, if you ever have anything you can't get people to bid on. I can usually get them to. Unless it's too small, sometimes you can't get anybody to bid on real small jobs, it's really tough. But if it's. Most jobs aren't too small, but I can usually find someone. If you have someone, if you have any kind of job that nobody will bid on, let me know and I'll find you some contractors. The last one is talking about our coding and corrosion expo. I I always bring this just because. At our expo, we train. We have four hours of continued education and at our expo, we have around seventy five. State road bridge inspectors every year, so. We pay for the courses and we pay for everything. They just have to show up and they get them. H N T V people show up. We all, it's also offered for rural water and and. Water departments, if they would like to attend, there's no charge, we cover the whole cost, we provide lunch, we give away door prizes. I'd say, and I I what I'll do is I will bring a invite. To you guys next year, they'll either send it or I'll email it if anyone's available and they'd like to come to our expo. Last year I had about twelve different politicians, I had the county commissioner from up there, Agnes. Queen, yes, so she was there and I had several state legislators. I see people running for office. One senator, one state senator, but but I usually have, you know, it's getting more, I'd like, I'd like to let the both politicians know what we do. And and that we train West Virginians, at least in West Virginians. That was all with this and I and I actually had one other thing.
Well, while you're looking for that, the other commissioners will tell you that first thing I ask any engineering company coming in to speak with us. Are you from out of state or in state? If they're from out of state, that automatically takes points away from them on any scoring that I do. So it's a personal thing.
Well, that's well appreciated. We have plenty of engineer, I. Up in Alabama, the city of Indiana has a lot of money and and they. Just throw money at stuff, so they added on to the swimming pool and they hired our local contractors, we got to work. But what they did, they hired an engineering firm out of Florida, the most expensive one they could find and and the people were just like, why couldn't you, there's not an engineering firm that could. Do in addition to the swimming pool from. The area somewhere, that was just a dead example of a bad spending of the people's money. Then I didn't give you these, I didn't, I just had these so. Like I said, we we're in, this wasn't anything we think, but it's just that we are hiring right now, like. We need like three hundred workers to do five or back work. It's it's a lot of seasonal work, it's like spring and fall work, it's good money, but it's. It's it's like part time, but when they work, they make a lot of money, so if you know anyone that is. Actually looking for. Any work. That they can apply right there, we need them for September, we need a couple hundred workers and the work is usually at powerhouses at Alwiches. Is what it is. I apologize, I didn't say that. These are just books that really not anything to do with. Your county, it's the bridge down in. Montgomery. The paint contractor that's down there.
You mean Montgomery, West Virginia?
Yes.
That is our county.
It is.
It's Fayette and Canal County. In fact, when you said bridge painters, I was thinking.
They have.
I mean, it looks like they painted as far as they could reach and that was it.
Well, I I have, I had some stuff on them, that that's the contractor that's there. I'm, I've just give you information on the contractor that's there. They're bad apples. They have a history of doing everything wrong, they break all the rules, they they. They break wage violations, they have EPA violations, they skip coatings in their work. They cheat every way they can and they've been caught and they've been penalized and and it's it's it's. That's the book, but here was the shorter version, I'll just give that to you, that's what.
I'm not going to use, I mean.
And I know that that's not nothing to do with you, but I just thought that I would inform you of how our state. Department of Highways mishandles.
Let's keep one of them, do you have yours?
Yeah, I gave them to Amy so she could put them in our system.
And if you have, you know, if you know any state people in Department of Highway or. State delegates that can. Stop bringing in bad contractors that do bad work, that rip off their employees, that pollute the river, you know, they're. They've been caught polluting the river, there's an article in there in Florida where they where they dumped the paint in the. In the river and. You can see, you can see it spilling out, but that's all information about that.
All right, I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming in.
That was all I had.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or anything?
No, pretty much hit on the things, but we have your cards and I've made some notes.
Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Okay, air evac. Livestream.
Thank you.
We also apologize to you.
Oh, no, 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 I just hope I can keep the energy up. If anybody wants to throw fists again.
And just state your name when you.
What feeds me and candy and starburst.
My name is Shula Harper, I work for Air Med Care Network. Locally, you know us as Air Evac. We're the life flight. Team helicopter that you see going across our communities every day, providing lifesaving and limb saving services to our community. Again, it's an honor to meet every one of you and it's been interesting. I love to sit in on commission meetings, it's so interesting and you get a lot of good tea. And so I I enjoy being here and I. I'm honored to meet every one of you, but I wanted to come over today, I didn't know if anybody had came before and talk to you guys about our membership program. Air Evac is a member of the Air Med Care Network and we have. An alliance of helicopters all across the US that work together. To provide lifesaving services in our communities. Here locally, you see Air Evac, but as you go out west. Go down south, the name changes to Heart, Guardian, Med Trans. So it's a massive, massive operation, but here locally, all you see is Air Evac, so you think it's just Air Evac. But this is a massive operation, we have thirty thousand employees. Very large, large coverage area. And what a lot of people don't know, my biggest competitor is that is lack of knowledge, people just don't know. Don't know what we do and don't know what we offer. They don't understand the need and they don't see the value, so my job is to get out there and get in front of counties, get in front of small towns, get in front of businesses. Get in front of people at events, flea markets, anywhere that I can go, Walmart, and I can tell people about our membership program. And I didn't know if, do you know if anyone's ever been here to tell you about it, or does anyone in here know about our membership program?
Not in the time I've been here, three.
Yeah, they, somebody came in.
Yeah. Probably Mary, Mary or Tom Baker, you guys probably know Tom or new Tom. But anyway, so what we do is we offer a membership program, it's not insurance, it's simply membership, just like you would have a membership to Sam's Club. So that means there's no claims process, there's no premiums, it's just one flat membership. Fee per year. Covers everybody in the home if you have to have a flight by us, it's that simple. I I'm not going to stand up here and and give you a bunch of. You know, baloney about this and this and this and this, and you know, if you have questions at any time while I'm speaking, just jump right in. And I don't want you to lose your question, lose your opportunity to ask it. But our membership program guarantees that you pay absolutely nothing out of pocket if you have to be flown by us. That means any deductibles, co pays, anything that the insurance does not want to pay, and we know how insurance works, they they don't like to pay. They like to deny and then you go through the appeals process, you go through the whole mess of trying to not only heal. Or heal from maybe the death of a loved one that had to be flown, or maybe you had to be flown or your child, you're also dealing with a. Massive amount that's due after your insurance didn't pay it. Or or refused to pay it or didn't pay all of it. P I tends to like to pay twenty two thousand dollars and sometimes these flights can be upwards. Of fifty and sixty thousand dollars depending on where you need to go. So what I'm here today is to present to the commission. That you can provide this for your employees, your county employees, there is a need there, we have a retention issue bad within our state, within our country. To that you can add membership on to their benefit package. That membership not only covers the employee, but it covers their entire household, so you're not just helping the employees, you're helping the entire household. You have a couple of cities, Etlia County, that already do this for their employees, the city of Oak Hill did this last month. For their, their, all of their employees, their fire department, the police, they provided this for everybody. And it, the average household in West Virginia is four people, so you think of how many people they're helping. By just providing membership to that employee. And they saw the need, they seen the value in it, because statistically. Even a four hundred dollar hit can cripple a West Virginia family. Four hundred dollars. And what we want to do is on the worst day of somebody's life, when they're being flown, when their family member's being flown, it's traumatic. It's the worst day, we want to make sure that the worst day of their life doesn't carry over for the rest of their life. And that's what I'm here to tell you about today and I just want you to know that this is available. That we're sitting in prosperity, we're sitting in Mount Nebo. And we're serving your community just like you are, and we want to help your employees. And we have different ways that we can do that, the commission can provide it for them. Just like the city of Oak Hill did, Nicholas County Commission. You can provide it for them, add it on to their benefit package, very inexpensive, seventy five dollars an employee, it covers everybody in the home. For an entire year. And then I come in every year and we do it again. If that's not within the the commission budget, to be able to do that and you'll see pricing in the in the large business plan brochure. I included a just basic customer that I give out in the community, but yours would be under a business plan. And if it's not within the commission's budget to provide it for the employees and and to their families. Then we also offer a payroll deduct option to where that you can at least make it available. If they're interested, they can come and sign up with me and then. I'll work with your your county clerk or whoever. To do a payroll deduction for them, that way that they can get the membership that they that they want. Does that make sense? I'm not going to stand up here and go into all, you know, I mean, I don't, I want to make it as simple as, and it really is that simple, it works, it's a wonderful program, but. We need partners, you know, to keep our units where they're at, to respond to this community. We need members, we have four million members nationwide, that means when you travel, you go to Myrtle Beach. You go to Pigeon Forge, anywhere that you, all the way down to Florida, Hawaii, your membership goes with you, that you're covered there, not just here. Any questions at all before I get out of the way? Nobody wants to fight? Man, y'all tough crowd.
No, thank you for coming in, because I hadn't heard the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome and 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 if I could hear back. From you, if you could do a vote to to provide it, to. To offer payroll deduct, whatever I could do to help you. Make that decision, you just reach out, you're you're welcome to make it today or I can hang around. We can talk afterward, whatever you need from me.
Know what your thoughts are, John, I would like to not make it today because our county administrator, who is the one who is in charge of this stuff, is is on leave right now. And when she gets back. You know, she can reach out to you and our W B U county administrators here and and I'd like them to talk. And come up with some recommendations for us, because they do our budget and they, you know. Say and let them do their homework and they're our experts.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah, well, thank you and I look forward to hearing from you. If you have any questions, my card's in there. And if anybody in here is also interested, apart from the county commission employees, I have brochures and I'm glad to have you and get your family covered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Michelle, you have negative four minutes.
All right, I know you'll be fast.
As I do normally about every year, we'll come with a Hava grant request. This time I'm asking. To get all the replacement batteries for all of our machines, it's necessary maintenance that has to happen. Where we bought all our machines at once in eighteen, they're now all due. We gotta see that to fit, to fit all of them, it's twenty eight thousand dollars. This this would cut your cost in half if we get this grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the expense.
A second, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's papers in here, you guys.
And Tom's not here, so we're waiting to hear back from him about a stamp, so we'll.
Now we're only five minutes behind schedule, which is good. Ice, ice.
All right, Ice and Terry. Katie's here.
Good morning, I'm gonna. Try to keep this at. What I agreed to do, which was just give a quick summary and then we have Dr. Christiansen from W B U on Zoom and he. And Katie, our local, Katie Johnson, our local coordinator, are going to give more of the meat of what. What we want you guys to hear.
I want to preface this too, I had approached Terry sometime ago when we first, when we first told me that we got the. The some of the opioids, we have over a million right now in the account, so. I approached Terry because I I see the health department is kind of. To guide us and and lead us and and ideas about this, we'll probably reach out to the sheriff too, and I I think we need to. Come up with some ideas, you can work together, working group meeting. To really workshop this more, but but I wanted. Her to talk to her experts and come up with some. Things to start the discussion about it, because we do have that money and we need to put it to you, so. That's, everybody was like, are we going to have all those conversations at the same time? Yes, we're going to probably have a workshop after this. But I feel like the best people to start these conversations off is is your department and 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 Ice.
Great, thank you, I'm really glad to hear you say that and. And we agree and and we definitely see this as just a starting point to to more discussions. So five years ago, we began a partnership with the West Virginia Prevention Research Center through W B U. When we agreed to pilot the ICE collaborative here in Fayette County. ICE, for those who don't know, is integrated community engagement and is based on the Iceland Prevention. And is based on the Iceland prevention model. Um, and so what we know is that early initiation of substance use during adolescence is a um. Important predictor of substance use disorder um later in life. So um delaying the age of initiation is one of the major goals of of these prevention programs. Um, that are targeting youth. So the longer you can delay, and just keep that in your mind, the longer that you can delay the initiation of substance use. In youth, the less likely they will be to have substance use disorder later in life. And you guys, I don't have to tell anyone in this room what we're dealing with um with our substance use disorder crisis. Um, here in Fayette County and West Virginia and the country. Um, so five years ago, we developed a prevention coalition, and when I say we, I mean stakeholders. Um, I'm not just talking about the health department. Um, we have amazing partners. Um, in a very short five years, some, this coalition has expanded and a lot of amazing things have. Um, developed as a result throughout the county, and you'll hear some more about that. Um. What we do is we use data that's collected annually, so seven through twelfth graders are surveyed every. Um, W V puts together these beautiful reports for us. Um, and we use that data to direct programming and policies. Um, and then to share with the individual communities, um what's going on in their communities. Um, we're in our fifth year, and unfortunately, that funding's about to end. Um, that's not saying, I mean, we are certainly continuing to look for additional funding to continue this work. Um. But this work cannot end at this point. I mean, we are doing some really important um impactful work. So we need to continue this work. I'd also like to mention that through the health department, we have a very strong harm reduction program. Um, so we are working directly with people who have substance use disorder. We have a mobile clinic, we travel to Page twice a month, we travel to Smithers twice a month. Um, we provide services every day at the health department. We are um. We work with the Ryan White Foundation doing HIV testing. The director of that program told me the other day, she said, Terry, because of the work you guys are doing. You do not, I mean, she said, as a direct result of this work, you do not have an HIV outbreak right now in Fayette County. It's surrounding you, but because of the work you guys are doing, you don't have an outbreak. And so. She said, just know that this is super important for you to continue this work. Um, we have a quick response team, so we go, um, someone overdoses, we get that report, and within twenty four hours, we go. And visit them and give them the resources. Um, we're sending people to treatment every single day. They do not always stay. Sometimes, before we even get back home, they're walking out the door, but um. But we take them back when they're ready to go back. It's like everything else. Not everybody with diabetes listens to the doctor. And does exactly what they're supposed to do. Not everybody goes on a diet. Isn't eating Oreos by noon that day, I mean. I mean, that is, it really is life, and so um, yeah, I'm right there with you. Um, so. But we're there when they need us, and we are getting people into treatment, and that feels really good. Um, I will say that this work is very hard. Every year, we're fighting the legislature. Um, not everyone feels warm and fuzzy about this work. Um, but we're dedicated, we're committed, and again, when I say we, talking about an entire community of. Really amazing partners. Um. So I will end my part with just saying that. We, of course, didn't get here overnight. This is hard work, it's gonna take some time to get us out of this crisis. We, right now, with this opioid settlement funding, have an opportunity, and I would argue that we have an obligation. Um, to our community, to our families, to these grandparents who are raising their grandbabies. Because they've lost their mommies or their daddies. Um. We owe it to them to do the right thing with this money. And so I'm asking you all, and you'll hear about the data and and what we've been able to do. And again, it's a short five-year time period that we've been able to do this work. Um. But I'm begging you guys to make the right decisions about this money. I've I've watched, and and I appreciate that you're saying we're gonna do this together. Because that is how it needs to be handled. Um, I've watched throughout the state what other counties are doing with this money, and it's really hard to see. Knowing what I, what I know about what I see um every day with these families that are struggling. We owe it to them to do the right thing with this funding, and so um, you know, I, we have. A draft budget for what it would take for us to continue the um ICE collaborative. Again, I know Dr. Christiansen, he used to look for funding. Um, we continue to look for funding. I also could use some help. Um, I would like to hire another peer re- um recovery specialist. And I included fifty percent of that salary in this budget. Um, but again, I know these are early discussions. Um, just, just please make sure we continue to be at the table and um. And. Again, I just, I just wanna make sure, I mean, this is a a, an epidemic, and we had a pandemic. I mean, you look. To the health department to lead in those, in those issues, and that's, I mean. I don't know if I've told you this, but but it's my view, having worked and um. With, you know, represented clients who are addicted and 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 clients whose parents are addicted and that sort of thing. Um, that prevention is really where it's at. I feel like we put way too much money toward rehabs, cause that's an easy fix. You know, or at least to the policymakers, you know, everybody thinks, oh, well, we'll just, you know, open a bunch more rehabs. Well, just like you pointed out. They're no good if nobody wants to attend them, you know, if nobody wants to stay in them. Um, you know, we need to invest in these children. Um, who are taken from their parents and these families to make sure that they are not, you know. Charted out like they're the bugs, and and that they're not sucked into it. And I I think prevention is really where. The most bang for our buck is. And so, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, I mean. Having looked in it, I mean, I, I mean, I'm over the whole rehab craze now. I mean, I wanna help people who want help. But I don't think we need more rehabs just in case somebody wants to go. You know, I think, you know, we can get them in, we have enough. I wanna get where we can. You know, treat them. And I understand peer recovery, that's different. Once they're in, you've got people that you need to work with them, but I'm I'm just saying that. You know, building more isn't gonna change anything right now. I think we need to focus on the kids. Who are affected by this and 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 who may be affected by it. Um, I agree, and I, I mean, we have to continue to. Be there for the folks and help navigate the system to get them into treatment when they're ready, but they have to be ready. Um. But prevention is where it's at. If we're gonna turn this thing around. We have to focus on prevention, we have to put money there. We have to put money um into prevention, and we have to, which again. You'll hear how the ICE collaborative does this. We have to empower the communities to engage and take care of their community. Um, and get parents involved and and grandparents involved. Um.
Well, and this is, I mean, I know Alice's business employees, recovering addicts, and I mean, I think that's hugely important. And there is some state programming, I think, that supports some of that, but. But, you know, we're, we're, we've talked on our commission about how we could use our day report center to better facilitate some of that. Programming to at the county level.
So what I would ask, and it sounds like we'll be at the table anyway, so I'll probably ask this question again and again, but. Anytime there's a question about where this money is going, I would just ask. When you just make those decisions, how's this di- directly impacting um the crisis that we're in? Because again, I'm watching what's happening across the state, and. I just, I'm having a hard time making that connection in some of those places, even though the things they're spending the money on. Are important things, and I know they need those. I just don't know how it's directly gonna have an impact on some kind of people who are struggling with substance use. Disorder. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Christiansen, because Katie has a lot of really interesting things to say.
Alright, you're up, Dr. Christiansen.
Well, good morning, commission. Can you hear me good?
Yes.
Thank you so much for uh the opportunity to participate in this important discussion. I just had a handful of things I wanted to highlight, uh in addition to what Terry was saying, and it seems to me that you all. Are in agreement that primary prevention is an important component of. Reducing the burden of substance use uh disorder in society, and I was actually going to open up by discussing that. And we can, of course, throw all our money at providing treatment, and then just waiting at the end of the chain and waiting for more people to come to treatment. And I wanna be sure that uh I highlight that absolutely we have to provide treatment, but if that is the only thing we do. Then we are just waiting for the problems to come to us instead of trying to solve them beforehand. And uh there are a number of approaches to primary prevention. Primary prevention means that we are trying to delay the onset of use. By kids, because we know from research all over the world, and certainly here in the state and in West Virginia, that kids that start to smoke and drink. And use cannabis early, they are much more likely to escalate their use into serious problems, including opioid abuse. And not only are they more likely to do that, they are also much more likely to drop out of school, to have kids very early. To be unproductive citizens in the work sector and so on. In other words, there is a lot of benefits in delaying the onset of use. Upstream, so that they may have a greater chance of becoming productive citizens. And uh therefore, members of our um society. Now, the ICE collaborative that we've been working with in Fayette County over the last five years has has shown some excellent results in this county. I've worked. Uh, with this approach all my career for over twenty years. In multiple states in this country and in over thirty countries, and Fayette County has shown some of the best results and some of the best response. To the system uh that I have been a part of. Uh, it all really comes down to the collaborative nature of the work. You know, we have been doing prevention in the field of prevention overall. Oftentimes, with the assumption that experts like me can march into communities, tell everybody what to do, do our measurements before and after. And then say goodbye and hope that people will follow suit. The challenge is that these kinds of approaches don't really work very well. People really don't like to be told what to do to begin with, and secondly. Usually what happens is that there will be a spike effect, a little bit of impact while you're there, and when you leave, things go back to their old ways. So we need to create and work with approaches that are led by local people. So the prevention coalition, that is obviously uh built off of local people in Fayette County, is that unit. We are merely experts that provide consultation and a framework to work with up here at W B U in the Prevention Research Center. And then we work with Terry and Katie and the Prevention Coalition of implementing this approach. Now, the way that we do this is that we provide consultation and operationalization of what we call risk and protective factors. For early use, and then we provide a routine of data collection to dissemination. So that the county is always working with new data. One of the problems with doing prevention overall. Is that we tend to have averages that do not adhere to our local home unit. In other words, how are we going to get parents, caregivers, and school officials, and health department workers, and other people that work in the field. Engaged in prevention if all we can give them is averages from West Virginia? We need local data in order to do that, and we need local data that is recent and locally relevant, and that's what the ICE collaborative provides. We provide data to the county that has county-level units and specific numbers for each school community. Because as you know, school communities differ. Some communities have high drug use, some communities have much lower drug use. Some communities have a lot of resources, and all the communities have limited resources, and we need to be able to dis- uh differentiate between those. Um, prevention is something that takes time, of course, and as uh Terry said. Over the five years we've been doing this work with CDC funding, Fayette County has shown some remarkable reduction numbers. In substance use among their middle and high schoolers, and those are, of course, uh primarily the illicit substances. Cannabis, tobacco, alcohol, uh and vaping, but these are the predecessors to other use. So there is a great incentive in 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 uh reducing those numbers i- in the county. I have compared those numbers in the county that I believe have been shared with you to national trends, and Fayette County is much, much better off. And has done much better job of reducing drug use among its youth over the last five years than um. Uh, than uh generally in the country. Unfortunately, we do not have very good state numbers. West Virginia unfortunately doesn't have a universal data collection system as it should. So that we can actually make plans and utilize real data, so that we know where we need to prioritize in our intervention work. But that's what this system does. It 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 allows the prevention coalition to work with real data. Not only on the drug use outcome, but also on risk and protective factors. Within the domains of parents and family, the peer group, the school environment, and their leisure time. All factors that are really important in the risk of drug use onset. And then they can make localized decisions that are based on local leadership by the prevention coalition. To implement intervention work. Now, the routine data on year after year, in a year after year manner. Enables them then to track their progress, so there is no guessing on what is happening. They actually know. Where they need to prioritize um over time. And so the P R C up at W B U, our, our job. Is basically to provide that data collection and dissemination mechanism, and then work with the local prevention coalition. To do their work the best they can, and we are merely on the sideline providing technical assistance. And concept definition and things of this nature. It's all led by local work, and and that's what the ask is today. In terms of the um opioid settlement fund. So I hope this was helpful in terms of our background. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, thank you.
Dawn, do you have any questions?
No.
Every word he says has meaning. Um, I'm just gonna wrap it up. I tried to find some uh state data like he was talking about to compare Fayette County to, and uh the best data that I could find was from twenty twenty one. And the survey, the number of students surveyed was less than the number of students that we surveyed here in Fayette County for the whole state of West Virginia. So you can't compare the data, this data is so much more valuable. Um, I attached three. Um, things to your agenda. I don't know if you'd have those, but you can. I can just explain, the graphic right here, this is funding. That we have applied for using, we, when I say we, I'm talking about the Fayette Prevention Coalition. Um, we have applied for this funding using ICE collaborative data. Our, our first big grant is a Jerkby Communities Grant. We applied to it for it before we had the ICE collaborative, and we were denied. We got our scorecard back, and it said we were denied because we did not have the data, and we did not have youth programs. Now we have both. Since then, we have acquired, we're working with five hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars a year in grant funding. Most of that is federal grant funding. One of our grants is about to run out next year, and um we're looking with several others, and we certainly will apply. But this is grant funding that the data helped us get, but if it goes away. We're at ground zero. Again, using this, we've, we've hired six people, as you know. Um, we've put programs in schools all around the county, and um. Better than even getting grant funding, we are um decreasing substance use. So, um, we look at this data, we make a plan. We say, oh, look, in Valley, we see that maybe vaping is up. Maybe the time that they spend with their parents is down. We can go to Valley, work with stakeholders down there, and make a plan. To address that. The, then if you, um, so you don't have your graphs, you don't have. The funding that we've received has helped us. Teach children and adults about the dangers of early initiation, but even better, we're strengthening and empowering the youth. We've talked a lot about preventing youth, but you know that with Camp Sore and programs that we have in the schools, that we're working really hard to build youth, to empower them so that they're our future. My last one, the last thing that I shared with you is just a picture of our of our posters. We print these posters two by three. And we walk around the room, we get people up and moving around, and we share the data. And we want to hear solutions. And I don't know if you guys know, but people like to complain. They see the data and they're like, oh, it's because it's the parents, it's the schools. But we really encourage, actually, we only accept solutions-based conversation. And we're training our youth to also steer people. You know, oh, I hear what you're saying, but what's the solution to that problem? We have our youth help us disseminate this data. And over time, in some places, we go back annually, like Alf Gere said. Over time, we were watching our communities grow, and our communities, you know, they may be, like at school, they've seen the data, and the last year, the next year, they come, we come to them, and they say, I've been thinking about this. I have ideas. So we're watching our citizens grow when it's based on this and come together. I've seen so many people, different people from different affiliations, different backgrounds, different political persuasions, come together when we talk about this is for our youth. And we have built some momentum here in the five years. Really, I can't add any more than what Terry and Alf Gere have said, except that we have made almost a hundred data disseminations. We've been out of the community over the last five years. We presented over four thousand people. And it's starting to sink in. I really think that we're just getting started.
Something that concerns me more recently, because I know somebody who's traveled through this. But there's a perception, and probably accurate to an extent, among our generation that marijuana is safe. Okay, but today's marijuana isn't the marijuana of the 1980s. And so somebody I know had a child who had marijuana-induced psychosis. Very scary. I mean, very, very scary. And so, of course, being me, I researched it to death. And some of the things I learned were that especially with male children, that it could be an indicator of later schizophrenia diagnosis or bipolar diagnosis. And there are just, there's tons of data, and well, not tons, there's data to support that is not safe for kids. You know, and, and so, you know, and I saw for myself it wasn't safe for this child. And, and that's something that, you know, and I'm looking at your chart here. And even though mine's in black and white, I think I can tell which one is not. But I, I know in our vaping and stuff and teen court and everything, I mean, I know that it's becoming more popular among kids. And, and that's a concern I have.
That's, so our most recent grant, the Partnership for Success Grant, is, our goal is to increase the perception of harm of cannabis use and decrease cannabis use. We have a third goal to increase youth participation and activities.
Well, then there's that Delta nine or Delta eight or whatever it is. It's one of the deltas that they have over the counter, synthetic marijuana that, I mean, I've seen people, you know, as mental hygiene commissioner, primary mental hygiene commissioner, lose it on that stuff.
And that's highly unregulated. So that's something that we need to talk about in our vape shops because it should be more regulated.
I wonder if that's something we could do.
And it's funny, we have a new campaign. It'll go out on Snapchat, it'll go out on posters, but today's marijuana is not the marijuana you use, you know, it shows the difference. And no amount of cannabis is good for the developing brain. So we do see that. We see kids get a little bit uncomfortable, and they say, well, my grandma said it's okay, you know? And it's like, it's not the same thing.
Yeah, or my parents are fine, you know? But it's different. And, and I mean, this, you know, it's shocking what it can do.
You know, and this is our discussion right now. What's our discussion going to be in ten years? Like, I've heard Alf Gere say this before, Dr. Kishan said this before. We can never turn our back on prevention, really. It should be a part of our, of our everyday, a part of our communities, a part of our municipalities.
Well, I feel like we need to educate the parents too, because in some cases, their parents are misinformed. You know, I mean, I wouldn't know if I didn't work in this business that, that it's stronger now.
Yes.
You know, and they think it's fine, and maybe some of them, which they were using it, but they've been using it a long time, and their brains are fully informed. You know, I mean, I, I just feel like the parents don't appreciate, because I know that a lot of these parents would not allow their children to smoke marijuana if they knew the potential consequences and the damage that it could do their brains at this stage.
Yep. When we got the 2023 data back, we put it all around the room, and we look at what are our priorities? Where do we see, where, where are our risks? What do we turn up? What are our goals? You know, what are we going to work with this at the coalition? And then we take it into the communities, and we do the same thing. And everything points to parent education. So if you have that great idea of how to get parents together, and we're trying multifaceted approaches to what's going to bring these parents out? How can we talk to these parents? But we would love ideas if you, you know, happy to talk about it. The best way to educate parents, because it's, it's a hard, and it's a hard demographic. It doesn't seem like it would be. What's that?
The doctors have a comment.
Yes.
Let's hear it from them.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just, I don't want to linger on with this too much, but I just wanted to echo the issue that we are seeing now with marijuana. It's absolutely correct.
Can you speak up just a little bit? Commissioner Brennaman and I both have trouble hearing, and if you can get closer to your microphone or something.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to echo real quick this discussion around the marijuana today versus what it was twenty, thirty years ago. Now, with the legalization movement or the decriminalization, it varies between states. Once marijuana hits the free market, it becomes a commodity for people to try to market and sell to the public. And of course, young users are the most profitable because they will be lifelong users. And the marijuana that we see today has up to ten times the potency of the marijuana of the seventies. That means much, much greater need for mental health services of people in serious trouble with psychosis and other such issues. I have some contacts in the treatment and therapy community, and they are basically seeing an influx of people that are literally in psychosis due to overuse of highly potent current marijuana. And let's not forget this, our kids see marijuana today in way different forms than we saw when we were kids. Marijuana today is in gummies and in food and in cakes and in high-splashing blingy units. They're not just enjoying. So this is, this is a totally different world that is going to be very costly to us if we don't act on the primary prevention end of things. People need to understand what they're taking. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah. I'm, I'll just, if you have other questions, happy to ask, but I'll just wrap it up.
No, I just wanted you all to know that's on my mind as you look at these stats and collect data. And I know Diane's in a good position with teen court to see some of this. We, most of our teen court cases have not been vaping and caught that I know of. I think there's, there's no way to test at the school level.
So we don't know.
Anytime they're caught, it's automatically default to nicotine. So until there's accurate testing of the vape, it could be charged as possession. But we default to nicotine if it's a vape.
We collect vapes that have been confiscated in the schools, and then we get the bucket. And, you know, it's not safe to put your vapes in a drawer. They're explosive. So we have a bucket, and there are marijuana vapes in there. We're starting to share with teachers and the community, this is what different vapes look like. There's a number of ways to hide marijuana. So we're starting to share that, but the kids are definitely using it in school.
That's helpful. Thank you. Well, so, did you have any questions or comments?
Well, I'll tell you, over the last five years, and seeing the progress that you're making, especially in the schools, when you come bringing all the little data and stuff that I asked a lot of questions from them. But I would like to see it run again another four to five years to see what input that we could actually have and breaking through. I've always heard that, I don't know if it's true or not, but every time that you make a step forward, the next year you double that step. Then you double that step. Just think, ten years from now, on what we've done now, we could almost double that again. So how many teams can we make more productive or families more productive by doing the same things?
Love it.
That's my thought. It just keeps coming up, you know? Hey, look at the goods that we've done now. How much can more community?
Teach health in school. Well, so my, my expectation is this. We have to make that decision together, but I feel like we should do a workshop like we have with the ARCA Sunday. But in this case, you know, get all the stakeholders in the opioid epidemic together and probably, and then maybe from that, with Sperner Working Group, you guys could then come up with recommendations about how to allocate what we have. Because that's, you know, I don't consider myself an expert in this. You know, we want to look to the experts to come up with. I do think we need to include and consult with law enforcement in some of this. I don't think we need to use all our money to build them a shooting range. I mean, ours do need a shooting range, but I don't think, you know, noise coming should fund the entirety of it. You know, but I do think that, that, you know, whether it's training, inputting, you know, what we need to do with our, our law enforcement to help them better deal with the people they deal with, maybe people from smuggling it into certain facilities and things among that. But, you know, I don't know, they're the experts, and I'm not on their side of things. But if you can think of any other, you know, stakeholders on this, like, those are the primary ones, but.
I, I think Anna Kincaid Klein, she might be on Zoom. Definitely our schools, you know, that's a really important stakeholder. And I would say that our success is, you know, their partnership has contributed greater to our success. Couldn't do it without.
All right. Well, that's a great beginning. I think just look to us, I'm going to wait till we're all here, and we'll figure out when we want to schedule a workshop. And then we can, we can go forward from there. But if you can think of any other, you know, points of contact or something, you can send them to me or send them to Amy. And we'll get a list, we'll make sure everybody can attend when we, when we do it, not spend a few hours at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds that you can imagine that this funding is ending, so it is a time-sensitive thing, so.
When is it in? September thirtieth.
And what is the cost of the program to run annually? The draft budget that we came up with, of course, it also includes half of a few recovery specialists. But it's $260,000. Okay, so, and we're waiting to see if grants are going to come in, but we don't know that they will. It's where we are there. So if grant funding comes in, then we should be able to do more if we were able to. Yes, although the only grant that we're waiting on now, I think, has, what, even after is?
That's a year. Yeah, he's looking at an NIH National Institute of Health grant, but a year out, so.
Okay, so, so we definitely, so it sounds like we need to buy time for the program, at least a year. Okay, so that's something we can discuss. I mean, we, we definitely have the money in the, in the settlement budget for that. So I'll wait until we'll get it on another agenda, and then all of us can, can discuss it. Because I don't want to be disrespectful if Commissioner Luisis has some ideas about the funding. And, you know, I wouldn't do it if Commissioner Brennaman weren't there either. So, but we'll get it on an August agenda, maybe seven, I guess, sounds like we need to do it on the seventh. If we don't do a special meeting for it. That worked, John?
Yep, that's wonderful.
Okay, awesome. All right. Thank you. Thanks, and thank you, Terry, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. We appreciate you.
Likewise, thanks.
Okay, we're still, I mean, we're, if I talk about Loot Creek, is Loot Creek's chief here?
Steve.
I got a text from Jake a little bit ago, and he's got a sprinkler later going in the facility.
Okay, so Steve, if I understand it correct, you are doing the financials for Loot Creek yourself?
Yes.
Okay. I, I want to go back maybe a couple of years. There really hasn't been any invoices turned in to, for reimbursements. They've essentially been operating off the $60,000 that the state gives them and in whatever funds they may have had before everything fell apart. And it was not of malice, it was an actual medical issue that came up. And Steve has stepped in to take care, to try to get him back in shape where they need to be at. They need money to operate on, to pay their power bills, to get fuel for the trucks in case there's an issue. And Steve, stop me if I'm not saying something that's not right.
So Ruth had mentioned something, and she's not here for me to clarify, but, but something about that they hadn't been submitting for reimbursements for a long period of time. It sounds like they have a bunch of outstanding.
Best, best that I can determine, and I have been able to see all the records back, and I'm dealing with the two audit right now. But I, I think around 2019, for some reason, I don't know, and it really doesn't make any difference, but they quit, you know, reimbursements. And when I, when I came back, I said, you hadn't turned anything in. And they said, well, we don't have any money in the account. They've got $99 in offsets in the account. So it's, it's, at this point, it's an impossible for them to really do reimbursements. And what we're trying to figure out is what legally we could do. I mean, we could take money out of another account and put it in there, but you can't come into funds, so that doesn't seem to be a solution.
I think, I mean, I've thought about this a little bit, but I appreciate your bringing it up at the last meeting, because, I mean, I had no idea what we're doing. But I think, and John had written me a note to this, to this effect, but I think what we need to do is, is give them some money, not from the levy account, because that's a reimbursement account. Get some money in their bank, figure out, you know, how much we need to keep them up and going for, for a period of time until they can get their reimbursement submitted. I mean, they, they have years' worth of that, and it's like not getting your tax refund or something. You know, you've got to, you know, but we need to give them enough time to get that. I understand these departments are strong, and, yeah, full-time docs on top of, you know, and I know Jake used to work here. So, so I know he's a hard worker, and he has a lot of kids too, so he does. He's busy. And, but anyway, so, so what are your recommendations with regard to what would accomplish that goal?
One thing we thought about, talked to Gia, and don't know if this is reasonable or not, but to go back and do some more where they paid money to reimburse, turn in a reimbursement for things they didn't turn in reimbursement for. But you can go back to previous years. If it needed to come out of that levy again. And, and I know his state auditor just does not like And, and I know the state auditor just does not like. Something like funds.
Well, but we have stuff that comes in after, you know, we had all that carryover money. Everybody's been banking. For, you know, how many years worth of engine money to grab in those accounts. So I'm not worried about, I mean, I don't know about you, John, but. I mean, I don't want to do anything wrong, but I don't think it's wrong to reimburse. Retrospectively, I mean, I can file my taxes from years ago and I can get my money back from the government. You know, including the state government.
And that's the most simple. Solution.
Well, I think they definitely need reimbursements, but they also need to be able to forecast and respond to their next. Fire, which is what John was, what John was making to me. So what do you think they need to, you know, stop bleeding? To get them through until they can get some reimbursements in. Uh I hate that he's not here to answer that question.
I'd say, well, you know, it all depends on how long you, you know, they want to hand away reimbursements. But uh. Just come up with a figure like five thousand or something like that. Uh. Even if it was advanced out of there. You know, they're. They're taught. Of the money.
What needs to happen? Well, we can't do, whatever we give them can't be from the levy. It has to be from another account that we have here, but that's a reimbursement. But um.
And there's, there's. They have some money coming in right now that we can put in there. But my question is, is that kosher with the audit? And all that, you know, just proper accounting for some.
What money coming in?
Uh. Right now, where that uh power line project's coming through, they, the land, they have satisfaction uh. For the addition. Uh we've got it meant to the company doing the construction. And uh. So that's. Money's not coming from any government source.
Yes.
But uh. My, my concern is just sort of be like watching. They were following the proper accounting procedure. Not sure that's.
Well, and that, so that's a concern I had too, right? Um that, you know. How do we get here?
Yeah.
And if we give them more money, are they still gonna be here three months from now? Um I'm not saying money, they're not entitled, money that we wouldn't otherwise give them. Um. So I mean, how do we, what do we need to do to get them caught up, like?
Uh if, if I can. Get back into some old. And I'm not. Sure what they have on file there to station. Uh uh. The board, all we feel is. That would be the central stuff. I think if I can find the.
Get the reimbursement. That was a reason I'm paying out a levy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts? Yeah, we, we try to think about different things, but that's the only thing you can. Like you said, it's a reimbursement.
I think that's, I think that's a, your, your. That's the claims.
I mean, so we've talked before about. The fire department's ability to hire professional services if they need them to get their accounting in order. Or to get whatever they need in order. I mean, is that something that needs to happen here? I mean, is Jake just too busy to do the reimbursements or? You know.
Well, that's, that's kind of falling on me right now, stupidly accepted.
Well, I'm sure everybody appreciates it because it needs to be done.
Uh. But uh. I should be able to. See what I can. Find there to, at the station because those records weren't with. Previous. Treasure with the stuff he turned. Uh it doesn't go back anymore. But uh. I mean. We can. We can work things out till we can get that turned in. If that, if that's allowable to use previous. Expenses paid out of the levy. For reimbursement that weren't reimbursed before. Then to me, that's the cleanest one.
So what if we were to treat a loan similar to the way that we give our PSBs? Give you a loan of X amount of dollars until you get your reimbursements back. And then that money is given back to us.
That would, that would work.
Um Chief Vernon, do you have any ideas here? Because you run a really tight ship and. Just wondering if you have any recommendations. Now, we want to help him. This, this isn't punitive at all. Um but I, I know the man personally and I know that he's. I, I can't imagine that he would have time to be a fire chief as many kids as he has in their ages and. You know, but. I mean, I'd really like to just figure out what we can do to help him get on speed and help him keep it going.
I. The only advice I really could give is. Pretty sure it's all kind of kind of relative to the state. State insurance monies. They have accountability factor in. If you mix monies with those money that they have separate again. So I would try to stay away from using any insurance monies. If you're removing money back. So there is, there is a penalty factor. When you offer.
If the loan came out of the levy account. The levy's money, then. After we get reimbursement, pay that back. It's, it's not a convenient to be found, how to fund you.
Chief, you said you're close to him. You have any thoughts?
Um. I thought Steve. More about saying ideas, trying to go back and get some of those. Older influences.
They definitely need to get reimbursed.
That would be easiest.
Get them, get them going. Um, all right, John, do you want to make a motion for your recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to. Give Loop Creek Fire Department a loan for ten thousand dollars. So that they can get their bills going, coming in, paid. And then working out a reimbursement. Versus past bills that were paid.
And to clarify, that will not be out of the levy, but that will be out of. Our general.
That's correct.
Okay, and I second that motion of all favor.
Alright.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention and for. Your input. Hopefully we can help them get going. If they need accounting services, like I was saying, we'll help facilitate that and, you know. Once you get into it, figure out. You know, what we need to do to help them. And the same with any of your other smaller departments in particular, you know, if. You guys need that kind of assistance and don't have it, you know, let's figure out how to get it for you because that's, we're already asking a lot of you and. And I, I would not want to manage a budget uh other than what we have to do here. Like, I wouldn't want to have Ruth's job and Gia's job. I mean, it's just, it's too much. And to me, that's just a lot. You know, if you're not a numbers person, not an accounting person. That's a, that's a lot to ask.
We're kind of brainstorming on the. Association level.
Yeah.
Uh. And looking at it kind of. With the uniformity in that, that when you're looking at, to even the commission looking at stuff, it's more apples to apples.
Yeah.
Uh and other than. That won't help go about accounting systems that. Are, are their own and that's not going to change because. That's, that's handled differently for the rest of the departments that uh. We're looking at, want to make it easier for them and easier for us to interpret data and all that.
Well, that's, I mean, it's a lot. Anytime they show me a spreadsheet, my eyes blaze. Like I, you know, that's just, I'm not a. I'm not an accountant person. You know, I understand when things are explained to me, like, should we do this or should we do that? But keeping track of everything and all of. All of that, that's a lot. And I think especially when you have full time job, you have family and all the other things. So, you know. I welcome hearing any idea that, that may help. And I think. All of that's probably fully appropriately reimbursed from the levy funds. Um because that helps maintain and operate a fire department. So, I mean, anything we can do to take. That burden off. And, and if, and maybe the towns, you know, if there's something that a service that the town provided you that is particularly helpful, you know, if that's something that we could. Somehow provide at the county level for the smaller departments, I'd be, that'd be open hearing that too. Even if we have to hire more staff to do it, you know, so we'll just.
I have one other question. Is there a, if it's okay with you, is there any way you can go ahead and cut that check today? So that he can take it with him and get it in the bank?
I can, does it do it? Okay.
Yeah.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Oh, that was a really good idea about the one I was. I wasn't even thinking one, so um.
Well, and we're just concerned about. But it comes a lot of time that, that we're doing it during.
Yeah.
Well, and we, and we'll talk more about that on our end. I don't think you guys should worry about that. That's one of the headaches that we have. So. I, I think if they can just get what money owed to them submitted to us, we'll figure out how to pay it. Means.
And Anthony, if you could draw up a, a loan documentation, of course, with no interest. And they pay it back as soon as they can. That way we're legally.
We need to document it somehow, but like, I don't think we, we know what payments they can make.
Yeah, there's no payments, no detail. So it's like a. Something that way we're covered, they're covered when the auditors come in.
We'll figure out something.
Yeah.
Who, who's going to sign on behalf of um Loop Creek?
The fire chief, Jake Johnson.
We have fire chief, we have three board directors.
Oh, we have a board of directors? It'd probably be the board of directors.
Chief, assistant chief. Wouldn't the board of directors have to meet and vote to accept, so?
Well. Yeah, it would.
It did have to take.
We look, we learn money all the time without contracts, don't we?
No, we usually have a legal document.
Okay.
I can, it's not a deal. I mean, it's a promise, it's a promise we know.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to have some. What?
Okay, thank you.
I, I just need the um. I think the board would have to approve it and then I just need to know who's going to sign. Yeah, and then I need to know who's going to sign.
How soon can the board be? Because. Okay. Why don't you just reach out? He can, she'll give you the check as soon as they. You get word that they accept the loan.
Okay.
Um. All right. All right, we've got to keep moving. Thank you. And thank you, Chiefs. So um Armstrong PSD, Leslie.
Leslie, if not, I can explain it.
Yep, I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have resolution number eight for the Armstrong PSD um pound and water tank replacement project. This is the. Has a community development block grant for. Uh because there are not enough board members at Armstrong PSD, we are asking the commission to. Approve this without the PSD's approval. They don't have a quorum, so of course they're unable to, their, their one board member at the time is unable just to sign this without a vote.
Thank you for answering that for me. John, or explain that to me because I don't understand. Um I knew that we. Okay, Philip, finally at last.
Reader's guide version.
Reader digest version. It's not too technical, so it's. Technical. Did everybody get a chance to read it? Or to look at least at the first page because that's a great summary of what.
Yeah, I, I read it.
Um and basically I'll just ask my group to serve for the financials. I can sign the, the status or, I think it's a sheet you've heard of. You guys have any questions about anything I wanted to do? Samuel, did you?
Well, it was sent and then Wilbur sent me a follow up email and told me to disregard it.
I was into the new contract. I didn't know if you already had it. I just sent the one that I had and I said, if you'd already read it, disregard it. I wanted to make sure you had a copy.
Well, I missed, I haven't, I haven't looked at it then. I misunderstood, I misunderstood your email. I got it from both of you, but I, I took your email to mean. We're not dealing with a disregard. This was, this was sent to you before.
Yeah, I just, I thought maybe I hadn't seen it. I wanted to make sure you.
So is this, have you briefed us on this before?
Well, I've started to talk about it before, but of course, our first year with the Congress was covered under. So basically what this is saying is the state of West Virginia realized they were paying for software.
God forbid, they shut us out.
And they did for many years. They're saying, well. Uh this is, this is your equipment. This belongs to you. You're going to pay for it. So I completely understand the draft at the end, like thirty counties getting hit with this. One of the ones by far.
I can't remember off the top of my head what the bottom line annually is thirty seven thousand.
Obviously, yeah, it's five year agreement that is paid annually. And I believe it does contain. I can't remember the terminology that calls to where it's non binding. So. So I know so great, it's had to be good in that way.
Well, and for, for um. Within the state government, a year is the longest we can be in anyways, so. Um. And we went with Motorola because it was the premium option, right? And it's more compatible with all the service, you know, the responders.
Correct, and, and with the structure as well, which was the whole point to be tied in with the structure statewide.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like we have to do it.
Yeah, we're, we're almost have to since we've been using it and the state had, was paying for it. Now it's. Back to the counties.
The question is, and, and I think this is just a matter of something that Ruth and Gia need to figure out is what, which fund it should come out of because we do have a nine one one center. Fund. So if you guys can, if we end up approving that, sounds like we want to um figure out. Make a recommendation, figure out what fund it should come from. I guess if it doesn't come from the emergency fund, then it depends on how, right? Right, it'll.
Yeah, it should come out of contract services.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. I don't like, I don't like. Touching anything without Ruth saying it's okay.
Generally, that's where any service.
We'll have another meeting just to undo.
That we have would come out of contract services.
Okay, when is this contract?
It starts October first. That's why Cheryl needs it.
They have a deadline, the deadline is like before the end of the month, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, it's last minute, but again, you know, you're looking at about thirty counties getting hit with this and. So she's having a draft for everybody. A lot of folks in the state having to do it.
Okay, well, I, I'm going to. The contract.
Second.
I'll take it.
I.
Missing anything, anybody?
Oh, that's incredible.